Good evening, everybody. This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting, number 2022-20. And today is Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. It's 7:30 PM, and we are meeting in the Village Board Room. And I hope everybody voted. It's too late if you didn't. But it's an important election. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Vorderer.
Present.
Trustee Sack.
Present.
Trustee Pembroke.
Present.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oleni Check.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
Trustee Desbend. He's absent.
He's absent?
Mm-hmm.
Please rise for the Pledge Allegiance Veterans First Responders Make Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
No public comments tonight. Okay, we move on to number four, and this is a presentation of Eagle Scout Awards. We have two Eagle Scouts in our audience today, and we have plaques from the Village of Oaklawn. We'd like to present them. Would Blake step up to the podium, please? Blake, congratulations. I know how much work it is. I am the father of an Eagle Scout. A lot of work. A lot of work for your parents, too, because I was there. Congratulations. We're proud of you, and we expect great future things out of you, Blake. Okay, I'd like to present this plaque from the Village of Oaklawn. This plaque is awarded to and presented to Blake A. Izaguary in recognition for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability as evidenced by his attainment of Eagle Scout. Presented by the Village of Oaklawn, October 23rd, 2022. The Honorable Terry Vorderer, Village President of the Village of Oaklawn. Again, congratulations. We'll get both of them up, and you could take a photograph for the paper, okay? Also, we have an Eagle Scout in our audience today, Domus Remus. Is that how you say it, Reyes? I understand you haven't officially been sworn in, but you will be here shortly. Congratulations, sir. And like I said, I know the work you did, and I'm proud of you. I'm Village of Oaklawn's proud of you, and we expect great things. You're in an exclusive club. Some of the greatest leaders in this country started out as Eagle Scouts, okay? So we expect great things out of you. This award is presented to Domus Remus for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability as evidenced by attainment of Eagle Scout. Presented by the Village of Oaklawn, November 8th, 2022. Terry Vorderer, Mayor, Village of Oaklawn. Thank you. We made a little mistake here. We misspelled his name. So I'm going to take this back, and we are going to redo it. And I'm going to take yours back, too.
Nice.
Blake, because I see that they framed this before I had a chance to sign it. So when we get it all done properly, I will reach out to you.
Indian giver.
Okay? Thank you.
Let them take a picture. Let them hold their plaques.
It's how I was in the...
Hey, they can hold the plaques.
Let them hold the plaques.
Yeah, let them hold the plaques.
Oh, yeah, hold your plaques.
Don't zoom in.
Yeah, just don't zoom in.
Don't zoom in.
Okay, number four is the presentation of our donations from the 2022 Fall Music Festival to Park Lawn and the Courage Program and Live Like Abby. I'm going to let Trustee Paul Mallow make these presentations, because he did all the work.
I wouldn't say that.
Well, I would.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this is the final phase of our 2022 inaugural Fall Music Festival. As stated numerous times before, both here at the board meeting and our Arts and Events Commission, we believe this was an extremely successful event that we pulled off here. We look forward to doing this in the future. And the biggest part of this event is the charities that we're able to donate some money to. So what I'm going to do here is, again, this year, we were able to make donations, the same as we did last year, of $20,000 to each charity. So at this time, I'm going to kind of bring each charity up here. They have a representative here just to speak a little bit about their charity. So we'll start with Park Lawn and Mark Denia. Give it up for him. Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Park Lawn, we serve individuals with disabilities, intellectual and developmental, all the way from mild to profound disabilities. We've been in Oaklawn since 1955. Our main building is on 10833 La Porte Avenue. We also have a workshop on 111th Street, Asila Home, which is a group home in Oaklawn. So we've been part of this community for the longest time, and great support from the Village of Oaklawn, always reaching out and helping our individuals with disabilities, the ones who are kind of neglected and forgotten about. But Oaklawn does a great job of keeping us in mind and always helping us strive to make our programs better. So thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Next, I'd like to bring up Molly O'Grady from the Courage Program. Give it up.
Hi, everyone. On behalf of the moms and children we serve, I would like to thank the mayor and the board for continuing to support the Courage Program. The Courage Program just celebrated its 42nd anniversary of helping single moms and their children. We help them with all baby care items, financial needs, social, educational, and all kinds of mental health services, legal services. And we do a lot of things for single moms that they wouldn't have the opportunity to have done for them without the support of people that really value our ministry. So thank you very much to the Village of Oaklawn.
And last but not least, our group from Live Like Abby. Give it up. Brian Wojcik.
Thank you very much. The support that we get from the Village of Oaklawn and District 123, specifically Comar School and Oaklawn Hometown Middle School, continues to be overwhelming for our organization. My niece Abby was a student at Comar Middle School when she was diagnosed with a brain tumor. Eventually passed away from brain cancer. Specific type of tumor that she had was called a glioblastoma. And as my brother Kevin and my sister-in-law Kristen began to learn as much as they could about this, we all discovered that the funding of research for children's or pediatric brain cancer is severely lacking. So what we've tried to do with our Live Like Abby organization is to fund a better way to treat, diagnose, and maybe potentially even cure pediatric brain cancer, because the funding for it, like I said, is lacking as opposed to treatments for adults. So we certainly appreciate the support that you have given us, and something like this is incredibly overwhelming and incredibly humbling to us, and we thank you very much.
Thank you. The final couple of words that I had was just in regards to our board, our manager, Tom Phelan. This is a great event. We're able to put this on to... And I always tell when I'm up there introducing the bands that, you know, this is what this is for. And the community comes out, supports it. And again, this is what we're trying to do it for, is these groups. And we're at full pleasure to be able to do that for you. Again, we need the mayor to sign some checks, so we'll get those to you as possible. So if you want to take... Yeah, sure.
Trustee Mallow, I think it's important to point out that these events that occur throughout the summer on our green and our major festival are not supported by any taxpayer dollars. Self-supported, pay for the events, and donate these charities, Oaklawn charities, a substantial amount of money.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a very good point.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. And one more great thing tonight before we get into the regular meeting. It's always been my pleasure to swear in new police officers. We have four of them tonight. Would those officers step up here to behind the podium? Congratulations, officer. We could take them all at the same time. They can recite their name when you give them the pledge.
Sure.
Okay.
Pictures could be of you, not me. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Robian Munsoar.
Having been appointed to the position of patrol officer.
Having been appointed to the position of patrol officer.
In the Village of Oaklawn.
The Village of Oaklawn.
County of Cook.
County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of patrol officer to the best of my ability.
Of the position of patrol officer to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I always like to tell when I swear in new policemen that I began my career in Oaklawn as a police officer. I think it was a century or two ago. They swore me in, okay? And I'm still around. I'm like a bad penny. But you guys, you got a great job. You got a great department. Do us well. We'll always support you and back you if you're doing your job right. Again, congratulations. Okay, we're going to move on to the... Oh, yeah, chief, I'm sorry.
For those of you that aren't familiar with our traditions, we normally have a family member pin their star on after they've been sworn in. So I'm going to invite each of them to come up, introduce themselves, call up a family member, and then that family member can then pin their star on their chest for them. So we'll start with Ibrahim.
Hello, everybody. I'm Ibrahim Munsoar. I brought my brother here today. It's my oldest brother, Mohammed Munsoar, to pin my star.
Alec.
Hi, I'm Officer Alec Naguilos. I brought my wife Shereen with me here tonight to pin the star.
All right, the next one up, I actually don't have a star because his dad is a retired detective, so he will be taking his father's star. Dan?
Nice.
I got you already.
Can he say a couple of words? Those are always short of words.
He's got all the words.
Yeah.
Okay, and last but not least.
Good evening. Officer Robert Schmidt. Tonight, I brought my wife and my three kids, but only two of them are going to come up to... I don't really want to go to daddy's work today, so...
I love it. We've got an extra seat.
All right, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to do this. I'd also like to thank CPD for sending these guys our way, because these are four laterals. And don't worry, unlike the Eagle Scouts, I'm not taking your stars back.
I do have a question for you. I understand we have another new police officer.
He's not ready yet.
He's not ready yet?
Next time.
Do you want to talk a little bit about it?
Yes, we do have an officer in training, K-9 Thor. He's a Belgian Shepherd mix. He will be out on the streets in about two weeks. He's completed four of his six weeks of training, and he's doing very well. So that'll be another star presentation.
Bring him in. Come in. Nice job. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, guys. Do us a good job, would you? All right, now we're getting into the meat and the regular business of the village board. We'll give you a few minutes if you'd like to leave, okay, before we start. Officer, would you shut that door?
Then it's a closed meeting. Oh, it's a closed meeting. It's a closed meeting.
All right, number seven, approval of the regular meeting minutes, 2022-19, dated October 25th, 2022. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oleni Check.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business by trustees. Trustee Oleni Check, District 2.
Yeah, I just want to go over a couple of things. I know that having two scouts from a program is pretty significant, and the Saint Year old scouting program is... I believe that that's their third Eagle Scout this year. And there was a... One of the gentlemen, Blake, his brother was Eagle Scout earlier in the year. So when you talk about dedication of parents and of leaders of the scout troop, they do a phenomenal job, and those kids are great kids in the neighborhood. Good to see more police officers coming to the Village of Oaklawn. We do support our police. We feel that they've been doing a phenomenal job, and we need to support our police and give them all of the tools they need to be successful. I know that one of the tools that we spent some money on has been... Right now, we're about halfway through implementation. But that flock system has done a tremendous job and just... And I know it's been key in some of the local... Or some of the cases that have helped give the police department some information that put breadcrumbs together to solve a crime. So another fine job, and I know we have our police canine dog coming on board. And, you know, chief, when you first became chief, you put together a laundry list of all the things that you wanted to accomplish. I believe you are pretty much there. So you got to set up the next laundry list of the things that are going to be accomplished. Oh, come on now. You and your staff are doing a fine job, and I just want to let you know, I myself am proud, and I can tell you that the citizens of the Village of Oaklawn are proud of the work that our police department has done and will continue to do. That being said, we got our first budget workshop coming up in another two days. This is part of the packet that our staff puts together, talking about our funding and what monies we need to operate this village. And I'm going to tell you that we all know that 2023, with what's going on in 2022, is going to be a rough year. We're already in inflationary times, and, you know, all economic indicators are that we're heading for recession. The residents of the Village of Oaklawn are going to be fighting higher fuel bills, which we all know. They're projecting that heat and electricity is going to be up anywhere between 45% and 50%. Grocery bills, if anyone's been to the grocery store, it's been a pretty significant increase. And that being said, I know that our staff will do the best that they can, as they've done every year, and we want to continue that streak with making sure that we do not have to face the taxpayers and ask them for extra or more money on their property tax. So I know that budgeting time is a stressful time, and I know that you got to balance all the wants and the needs and the goals, and I know that thinking out of the box in the past and in the future is going to help continue to guide this village in the right direction. So that's all I had to say. Thank you for...
Thank you, trustee. Trustee Mallow, District 3.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing really, other than a reminder about Sand on the Green. I know we have one more meeting before then, but Sand on the Green is coming, November 26th. It'll be right out here on the green from 11:30 to 12:30. So I will remind you again next meeting as well.
Is that it, trustee?
It's on its way.
Okay. District 4, Trustee Pembroke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing. Now that the time has changed and it's getting darker much earlier or earlier, I just want to ask the residents in Oaklawn if they could just please slow down on the city streets, the village streets. My observations while I'm out of my house and walking around the neighborhood is just there's so many people just driving way too fast. And, you know, please stop for the stop signs. Just rolling through them all the time, and it's just so dangerous out there. So please, that's the only one thing as I stress, please slow down in the city streets.
Thank you, trustee. District 5, Trustee Stalker.
I just wanted to mention the fact that I and many other trustees were out today at the polling places collecting signatures. It was really heartening to see the number of people that showed up at the polling places. In past years, it's been very sparse. I guess what's happened in the State of Illinois and the United States is walking people up, they've responded by going out to the polls and voting. I just want to say thank you. That's it.
Thank you, trustee. District 6, Trustee Sack.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things to reiterate that Trustee Oleni Check talked about with the village. Hopefully, we're going to do everything in our power to tighten our belts to keep a tax increase away. I'm involved in my job with... As a capital purchasing manager with a couple of facilities, production facilities being built in different states. And I'm exposed to, you know, a lot of the other states dealing with what we are. But when we get down to our level, I think we're a phenomenal job, and we have for the past several years, and I know we will continue to. And also, Alex kind of beat me to this one, too, but I did want to thank the police department as usual. One of my really... One of my best friend's cars was stolen from right in front of his house on 108th and Comar, and the police were out there in the morning soon as he called, and they were able to give him information from the flock cameras to tell him exactly when the car, his car, crossed into Evergreen Park and into Harvey. So they were able to, you know, give that information. So when you go to the insurance companies, at least with this, you've got all this solid information from this new flock camera system, which is just amazing. And they also responded immediately to a call that happened in the neighborhood where a gun was pulled out. There was four to six squad cars, I guess, there in a matter of minutes, and the situation was handled, taken control of. So I like when I get those calls where people are telling me positive things out of a negative situation. So great job, chief. Tell your department, keep up the great work. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Village managers report.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just have one thing. Trustee Pembroke is exactly right. We're getting more and more calls from residents who are concerned and complaining about the driving in the village, in particular on the side streets, blowing through stop signs, driving too fast. And it's, you know, I think I... We've talked about it in the past. I think it's a symptom of the bigger problem of people just lawlessness in general and lack of respect for authority and rules. But it is becoming a concern. We get calls a couple of times a week. And everybody, you know, is of the same mind. Can we put more police officers in the street? Can we assign them to writing tickets? And the answer is yes, yes, and yes. And we do do that throughout the summer. We do have code enforcement officers. Like everything else, it becomes down to budget and manpower. But we are aware of that, and Chief is aware of that. And to the extent you or somebody else hears of these things or there's particularly troublesome area or repeat offenders, let us know, and we can direct some manpower and perhaps some traffic calming devices in those areas. But it is a problem. It's used to be the rolling stops, and now it's just people driving right through them. It's really startling, especially in these areas where you see kids playing. So Trustee Pembroke is exactly right. We need to do something more about it, and we'll try to do what we can with the resources we have. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, manager. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine brought forward at the direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted in one motion if discussion is desired. That item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees' approval of a separation agreement between Jeffrey Sebeck and the Village of Oaklawn. B, request Board of Trustee approval of the Traffic and Safety Commission's 4-2 recommendation for a two-way stop sign at the intersection of 96th Street and Comar. And C is the ordinance for that sign, 22-20-65. D, Resolution 222060, a resolution approving the settlement release and agreement in the matter of Ashley Cortez and the guardian, who is the guardian for Mark Berkshire v. versus the Village of Oaklawn, case number 2022-L000192. E, Resolution 22-20-61, a resolution approving the installation of native plantings for the 52nd Avenue and the 100th Street Detention Basin for the Village of Oaklawn, Cook County, Illinois, by Low Distill Construction Company. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to discuss B and C.
Okay, we are voting on A, D, E. Motion's made, please call the roll.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oleni Check.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. B is a request Board of Trustees' approval of a Traffic and Safety Commission's 4-2 recommendation for a two-way stop sign at the intersection of 96th Street and Comar. And C is the ordinance 22-2065 to install that sign.
Yeah, Mayor, that 96th and Comar is right around the corner from my house. I mean, Comar is right around the corner from my house. And I've been over in that neighborhood many, many times. And I'm not against the stop signs. I'm just, I don't know how effective they are. From Keeler to Kilpatrick, I think there's nine streets. There's already seven stop signs on 96th Street as you go east and west. Only Kil there and Comar don't have a stop sign. So this would be like the eighth stop sign on that street. Which, again, I'm not against it. I think people definitely need to slow down in the neighborhood.
So this would be like the eighth stop sign on that street, which again, I'm not against it. I think people definitely need to slow down in the neighborhood. But my concern is enforcement of the stop signs, you know, and I know our, our police do a great job and I'm not, you know, I don't want to take patrol officers off their duty and do all the things that are going on, but my, my thought or question is I see the code enforcement cars around. Is there a way that maybe we could use code enforcement to maybe focus in on the speeding that's going on in the side streets and the, the blowing of stop signs, you know? And a lot of it is our own residents. I mean, when I'm out in the morning, I see a lot of people taking their kids to school. My neighbor and I have preschools right there. And they're just zooming down. Like they think, they think the east-west streets are through streets, you know, and they're just zooming right through and it's, it's really dangerous, you know? And I, I'm getting calls for stop signs on corners all, all, all the time. So I'm not against the stop sign. I just think we need to come up with a way to enforce the stop sign without putting more pressure on our police department.
Chief, code enforcement officers cannot write traffic tickets. Yeah. Right. These are state statutes.
But is there and is, is there some way of having maybe not a police or maybe police on probation or that are going through a period, you know? I know that you're not always going to have those because just the dynamics of, of a department. But can you, can you have, can you have somebody to write tickets? It's got to be a sworn officer.
Well, Chief, we're asking you to emphasize with your department this, these complaints of our residents on the rolling stop signs. Can you know, Jamie?
I know I get phone calls right away saying, I got written up for a stop, I blew a stop sign. Okay? And then I don't know what to say, but I know that's the next set of phone calls.
Well, you tell it to the judge.
Yeah.
You know, Ninety-Sixth Street is a unique street. I live in this vicinity too. It is the alternative to Ninety-Fifth Street, particularly when there's heavy traffic. You got a number of lights there and the people that use Ninety-Sixth Street to beat the traffic have a tendency to speed.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're making time.
There's also
But it's a problem.
A lot of traffic coming off Ninety-Fifth Street trying to beat the light at Kilborn. They're also trying to beat, to get to Ninety-Nine Street. So people are requesting stop signs in there to keep people who are going north and south on the side streets off of Ninety-Fifth Street. So it's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of traffic around the hospital, but mostly it's during rush hour. That's, that's the biggest time.
Right.
In the morning between seven and nine o'clock and in the evening between four and six, four and seven.
Chief, see if you can put somebody out there during those hours, rush hours, you can make an impact. You know, the problem is you can put a policeman out there and you can write fifty tickets. Two days later, they're going again and doing it. If they're not there all the time, it's difficult. But nevertheless, I think it's an important part of the police department to control some of these traffic situations.
Well, Mr. Mayor, can I?
Sure.
In the time that I've been a trustee, the number one complaint, number one complaint that I get is traffic, the flow of track, traffic and speeding, how people are driving. And working with the police department and discussing some of the, the issues that are out there is we could take it and we could put resources out there in it that'll get an immediate response for a short period of time. Residents want to see more stop signs because they feel that stop signs get people to stop. It doesn't work. The biggest thing that I think we could hit is our local courts because the sad thing is the police officer writes a ticket for speeding or writes a ticket for traffic violation, goes into our court system and Chief, what happens to ninety percent of them? That, the, the court, because, and, and that goes with what Tom was talking about, holding people accountable because, you know, when people have bad driving habits and it's bad driving habits, that's an individual decision when they're driving, if they're going to speed or if they're going to blow a stop sign or if they're going to drive reckless. That's a personal decision. We do not have enough police manpower to be able to hold every individual accountable, but we can start saying that when we are sending our resources on it and they are going to the county courthouse or to, typically for traffic, that's Bridge U? Bridge U, that the system is holding them accountable because, I mean, bad drivers can consistently get tickets and walk out of court and get a slap on the wrist. And it's, it comes down to enforcement. So police officer writes the ticket, then he goes into court. Typically, court is two hours for that police officer. He's got to get there prior and then he's got to wait till his case is called or cases are called and then he is let go after that, correct? And that's typically done on overtime. So it's, it's one of those things that there isn't a hard solution on how we can get people because it's, it's not just around yours. People cut through Ninety-third Street to stay off of Ninety-Fifth Street. Now that we've got the, the construction going on central, every one of the north-south streets that are east and west of central, they're all getting hit with heavy traffic during the same period of time. So in putting up speed humps, what we found is putting up speed humps gives you that false sense of security. And Menard from Ninety-first to Ninety-third, every resident wanted the speed humps put in there. Two speed humps were put in. When they redid the street, every resident signed a petition saying they don't want the speed humps in there because what they saw is the people were speeding from Ninety-first to the speed hump. They'd slow down because they don't want to wreck their car. After they hit that speed hump, it was speeding down to the next hump, slow down and get over it, and then still speeding. It's bad driving habits. And if there's not accountability for it and the resources that we're using are trying to hold them accountable and the court system is not making it a finable or, or giving a substantial fine or even holding the individuals accountable by it being on the record, it's going to continue to happen. So I, I, and Chief, do you see any other resources that we could do, any other type of technology that we can bring in that would help?
Right. And manpower just, just gets them at that time. At that time, they get a ticket, they go to the court, they get slapped on the wrist and or pay a fifty-dollar fine and they're out of there or they let them go because maybe it's the first time they've been caught.
Do we have to give traffic tickets? Do they have to be written to the county and the state or can we make that a local ordinance and bring them to our local court? So even if we tried to bring them into our, our local court and hit them with local speeding ordinance or a local
And just going back to speed humps, there are studies out there that show that sometimes the speed humps cause more damage because people don't know they're there. They lose control of the car. They end up on the park, you know, the parkway. They crash into something. So you know, there, there's just not a great solution for this. I know we've talked in, in meetings before about circles, you know, in between as a Beverly or Evergreen has started to put in where they're forcing these cars to go around and make it longer for them to go through your little town than it is to, to stay on Ninety-Fifth Street, you know, where they're cutting through. Because they cut through everywhere, not just Ninety-Sixth Street. It's it's in everybody's district. So, you know, just going back to what we have on our docket today, just regarding this, this intersection, specifically the Ninety-S sixth and Comar, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of stop signs. I think they will slow them down. Again, it's two-way stop signs don't make any sense to me. I think when they see the two-way stop sign, they think, oh, I'm just going to slow down and then go where the other car doesn't know that they're supposed to stop, you know? So I think it could cause more damage then, but I'm, I'm definitely not for a two-way stop, but.
Well, right now, we I'll entertain a motion for B and C.
I just want to ask one more question of the Chief. I'm just curious. Is there any evidence, you know, the site, the, the ones that you put out, you're going, like you put, the speed limit's twenty-five and you got to sign up there saying you're doing thirty-five. Is there any evidence that that helps? Because I've had residents request, you know, putting that like in a hundred and fifthing costner because they're saying I was just curious if that's something, if we invested in getting any more of those and putting them, moving them around at other intersections or Even that, like, I know a hundred and fifteen costers are a hotspot in my district. Even if we were able to give the residents information, say, yeah, what you're seeing is the, the two percent of the worst of the worst, but here's statistics showing that it's not as bad as you think, but you do see things coming through. So Yeah, no, we can touch. I don't want to hold up anymore. I just wanted to get that on record because if, if that was something that would help and we could throw a couple of those out there, like Jamie, if you had somebody who, you know, said, hey, this is a hotspot, even if you put it up there for three months, you know?
There's a group of residents that want a stoplight at Ninety-Ninth. I'm like, what the heck?
Yeah, no. I, I think if we, like, with that, if he's able to give you those and you can give that to your constituents, they look at it's, it's not as bad as you think it is. Here's the fa, I know nobody's ever going to be happy because I get the same calls you do.
Chief, I got a question about the stop sign, two-way versus four-way. What, what do you think is, you think a four-way stop sign is is better intersection than a two-way or it's about the same?
All right. Well, we, we're going to have to entertain a motion on B and C. Is there a motion?
Is there a petitioner here or is there something that we can discuss as far as what, what this is? Because again, I, I, I'm not going to vote yes for a two-way stop sign in the middle of town like that or in the middle of a Comar Ninety-S sixth. If it's a four-way, you know, I would entertain that, but a two-way, again, I don't know where everybody sits on this.
Well, you know what? Amend and make it a four-way? If a four-way
You know what? I would suggest that we go ahead and pass this, okay, as a two-way. And trustee Pembroke, you can go back to your complaint and, and assess whether a four-way would be smarter and we can just put on the next agenda, another stop signs for that street. Would that work?
It'd be table? It would be table.
Well, we could, we can go around the safety committee. We've already, the safety committee's already reviewed that. I'm assuming they did a study on car counts and accident things at that intersection.
They're just going to bring, they're going to bring in the petitioner. They're going to have a signed sheet from all the neighbors in that area and they're going to, and, and I read it and it said they had all three options. East, west, north, south, two ways or a four-way. And they were open to any of those options. And for some reason, this, this, and this just happened this last Thursday. So, I mean, it's, it's a few days old.
Why wouldn't we be able to amend it to make it a four-way? The traffic committee is just a recommending body.
Right. Yeah, it's on the current agenda, according to our council here. This has to be
Then I'd like to, I, I don't know what to
I, I think the smartest way is go ahead and prove this and then come back and change it. Yeah, all right. A motion, is there a motion here as, as it reads on B and C? Again, is there a motion?
All right, I'll motion.
Okay, second?
I'll talk to him.
Second?
Second.
A second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Malo.
No.
Trustee Oleniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one. Again, we can readdress this issue and I agree with you, trustee Malo. Four-way stop signs are a much safer way of putting a stop sign there. Everybody has to pay attention and people don't assume the other side has a stop sign. I have a two-way stop sign in my own block on Colan and sometimes it's confusing. I always have the true way without a stop sign, but I always have to be cautious of the people because they don't know that I don't have a stop sign. So I think we can readdress that in the future here, but we'll, we'll approve this petition stop sign today. Okay, we'll move on here to the village clerk's report.
We have disbursement resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-D dated November eighth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of six million, nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Motion, please, to pay the bills.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke. Trustee Malo.
Yes.
Trustee Oleniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all.
That's it. Okay, village president's report. You know, November eleventh is Veterans Day, an important day in the history of America. The VFW will be doing an event on November eleventh, ten-thirty, at our Veterans Memorial here. Hometown Oaklawn Middle School's choir will be performing at that event. District one-twenty-two at nine AM at Coe School will have a school assembly and have invited veterans to it. Okay, for their event. Breakfast will be served afterwards. So if you're a veteran out there and you want a free breakfast, nine AM, November eleventh, District one-twenty-two, Coe School. And on a personal note, tonight, I've been married fifty-three years. Love you, honey. I love you today more than ever.
Couldn't get this meeting changed?
All right, I take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Malo.
Yes.
Trustee Oleniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
I got to go.
Thank you.
Home. I got to be at work at five.
Uh, I've seen your face.
Do Alex, the name.
Another one?
Okay, yeah.
I know. How can you handle one? I got to handle two.
Hey, Chief. Chief.